Okay, we ready to go? All right, we're gonna call to order the city council meeting for September 5th, 2013. And tonight, we're actually starting a new fun program that we're gonna be doing, which is the school system is gonna be providing us people to come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will also give, you know, some students and some teachers some opportunities to learn what we do, and more importantly, give us the opportunity to learn some of the stuff that they're involved in. So, we're gonna be having them come to different students, different schools, coming in and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have Mackenzie Ormsby, who is Student Council Vice President and co-chair of SMAC Week, and then we also have the Student Council and SMAC Week Advisor Tommy Grant. So, they are here, so if you guys wanna come up to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you very much. And if you want to, why don't you just tell us a little bit about what you're involved in, Student Council, SMAC Week, those kind of things.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Ormsby, and this year, Stillwater's hosting their fifth annual SMAC Week. And SMAC Week is where students create events to help money, raise money for our benefactor this year, which is Turning Point Ranch. And Turning Point Ranch helps special needs kids by using horses and getting them more acquainted and comfortable. So, it's really an honor just to be a part of that, and just see how all the students band together and come raise money. And this year, we're hoping to exceed our goal and just raise more money for them.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
That is great. And we actually have one other announcement to make. As it turns out, tomorrow is Mackenzie's 17th birthday. So, happy birthday, Mackenzie, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Run down, and then we'll do proclamations. We have two proclamations this evening, and the first one, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation; and whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and the community at large; and whereas people in recovery achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and contribute in positive ways to their communities; and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance abuse disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services; and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Policy, and the City of Stillwater, oh, I'm sorry, Service Administration, and the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the City of Stillwater invite all residents of Stillwater to participate in National Recovery Month and support this year's theme: Join the Voices for Recovery: It's Worth It. Now, therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2013 in the City of Stillwater as Recovery Month. Patty? Oh, I'm sorry? Hi, I'm John Bartley.
I'm Gary Wilwood.
Nice to meet you. I'm glad you'll be here. If you'd like to say a few words, tell us about Recovery Month and the events that you're gonna be having later this month.
Yes, we're glad to. Just in the sense that a week from today, we will be having a community event to recognize Recovery Month, and it'll be held out at the Expo Center, and just inviting all of the citizens in participating areas around here to come and be a part of what we'll be doing. And again, it's just about letting people know that there is hope for recovery from substance abuse or mental illness, and so we just welcome everybody to be a part of that.
Thank you.
You wanna give the background, or you wanna just go with the proclamation?
I'll probably let Chris.
Okay.
Chris.
You wanna do the background? Or I can just go with proclamation, your choice.
Well, a while on route, Matt Anson's one of our operators for the Waste Management Division, and he was on route one day, and it was, it was one of the hotter days this summer, and he noticed a elderly man that was laying in the driveway of his home, so Matt stopped and went to him and see if he needed any help, and of course, he did. I guess he'd been laying there for a little while, so he helped him get to the porch, and stayed with him for a while, and offered to call 911, but the gentleman said that, you know, refused the 911 call. So, he helped him get into his home and make sure it was all right, and then carried on with his route, and he went probably about two or three homes down the street, and ran to one of his neighbors that was outside, and he let him know what happened, so he would be able to go and check on him, which he did, because the gentleman's wife was not at home at the time. So, the gentleman's wife wrote us a letter saying that, you know, that she believes that Matt may have saved his life.
Great story. So, we have a proclamation saying thank you. Whereas Matt Anson has faithfully served the City of Stillwater as a waste management equipment operator for the sanitation department since May 22nd, 1997; and whereas on July 22nd, 2013, Matt became a local hero when, on that day, he was in a position to assist an elderly citizen who had fallen in his driveway, striking his head on the concrete. Matt was working his neighborhood collection route when he discovered the 85-year-old gentleman lying in the driveway in the hot sun. Matt helped him up and safely to his porch, and rang the doorbell to discover that no one else was home. When Matt determined the gentleman was able to stay alone, he left to continue his route, and came upon a neighborhood, a neighborhood man walking and asking if he knew the gentleman. The man contacted a close neighbor who stayed with the gentleman until his wife arrived home. His wife believes Matt saved her husband's life and is very thankful for his quick action and caring. Now, therefore, the mayor and city councilors hereby recognize and express their appreciation for the lifesaving action by one of their own, and do hereby proclaim this day, September 5th, 2013, in Stillwater, Oklahoma, as Matt Anson Day of Heroism. Thank you very much. Let's do it. That's gonna take us down to the consent docket, and we have one item on the consent docket, approval of minutes from August 19th, 2013. Is there a motion to approve the consent docket?
I move to approve the consent docket.
Motion second to approve consent docket. That passes three to zero, and I guess I should've pointed out that both Councilor Scott and Councilor Weaver are not with us tonight. All right, that's gonna take us down to public hearings. And the first item, there is a memo, the applicant, this is being asked to be postponed until September 16th, 2013, so I entertain a motion to postpone this item until September 16th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to postpone. And that is approved, three to zero. The second item on public hearings, that is going to be dismissed, and Mr. McCormick, no action, just, it's dismissed.
Yes, sir.
Item B is dismissed. That takes us down to general orders, and item A is quarterly financial reports.
I'm Marcy Lamb, CFO for the City of Stillwater. The fourth quarter of the fiscal year 2012-2013 continued on like the other quarters had, and we were experiencing a good year, for it's been a long time to say that we've really been experiencing a good year. Total revenues for the general fund were 8.18% over the original revenue projection, and sales tax revenues at year-end were 9.38%, and that was the highest one-year percentage increase since 2002. So, that was pretty amazing. In 2002, we had an annual increase of a little over 10%, so it's been quite a while. Use tax is 35.62% over the original budget projection, and this was the final year where any portion of the use tax went to Oklahoma State University, so we did transfer them their $600,000, but next year, that will benefit from the entire amount. Fines and forfeitures were 25.5% over the original budget projection. Part of the factors of that were increasing the fines, and being able to pay online, and just increased the revenues in that. Some of the other highlights in the general fund revenues were water sales out at Lake McMurtry for oil companies to use for fracking operations. We sold some properties, and we also had internet sales of surplus property and a commission rebate from our purchasing card activity with Bank of America. So, all in all, the general fund had quite an outstanding year. Adding to the general fund's position is the expenditures only came in about 94.18% of their original budget, so whenever you have revenues exceeding and expenditures falling behind, then that's gonna add to our fund balance and be a good year-end for us. The other city funds that are not utility-related or Trust Authority-related, pretty much on their annual target, CVB was one that was 30.13% over its annual target, and Rural Fire Prescriptions were 50.18. Stormwater and transportation fees were 60.46 and 123.86 over their budget, and that was due to several of the large developments we've had going on construction-wise in the city for the last year or two. So, that's pretty much the highlights for the governmental funds. In the Stillwater Utilities Authority, revenues are 7.37% over their original projection, with electric and water revenues are 6.88 and 11.78% over their annual target, and customer service fees are over by about 5%. Money that's going into the funds for capital improvement in both water and wastewater had a slightly, were slightly above the quarterly target. Operating expenditures for the SUA were 89.88% of the original budget, so very well under the budget mark on that, which is also gonna add to a good addition to the fund balance for the Utility Authority this year. Purchased power expenditures were 85.9% of the approved budget, and that contributed greatly to that number overall being under budget. Revenue expenditure activity for the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, we're pretty much right on target for both revenues and expenditures. The main activity in the Stillwater Economic Development Activity, or Authority, is the activity of the Bid District. However, we have also moved the economic development activity into there, so you will start seeing that be, you know, more prevalent in those numbers going forward. So, overall, these were the quarterly reports. They do not reflect any year-end closing entries or accrual entries. The numbers are not audited. Once we get the audit complete, for SUA, it should be the very beginning of October, and then for the City of Stillwater, it'll be sometime early December, and we'll get those final reports out to you. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, general orders, our design contract for reconstruction maintenance of city bridges. Dr. Peak.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have just a little short presentation for you, because we don't talk about our bridges a lot, and I want you to understand what this contract is about. But basically, the recommendation is for a design contract award to BKL Incorporated out of Tulsa to provide professional services, and this is for, as part of this year's budget, you authorize $500,000 in capital expenditures for design for maintenance of our bridges. We have 28 bridges on our city transportation system. We're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep. This contract basically has three separate elements. The first one, under element one, will basically reconstruct Third Avenue over Boomer Creek, and this is right at Perkins Road. You're looking eastbound, you see the Moose Lodge and the medical complex in Hughes Lumber. You know, to the general person, the deck of the bridge looks okay, and that's what most of our traveling public sees. There are basically, biennial inspections are done on all of our bridges that gives us an assessment of the condition. They look at the deck, underneath, the channel, and everything, and that's where we get to see fun pictures like this. This is basically looking at the bridge. It's a steel beam bridge. You can see that the painting has gone away at the edge of the beam, and we're basically starting to have rust and corrosion eat away at the beams. It's not an immediate safety concern, but in the overall rating, this bridge is classified as structurally deficient, which is a term that you hear a lot. What that basically means, similar to the way we rate our pavements, bridges have a rating scale. Structurally deficient bridges are poor bridges. That basically means they've exceeded their lifespan and are in need of some serious rehabilitation and reconstruction. So, the consultant will be walking us through some alternatives for reconstruction. Maybe we can do some rehab, salvage some parts of the bridge. We definitely will be looking at widening the bridge to provide a turn lane at the intersection. This is one of our bike routes, so looking at bike lanes, adding sidewalks. And it's also on the corridor for the Cameoka Trail, so we'll be looking at how this bridge interconnects with the Cameoka Trail. The next element out of those three types of bridge projects is what we call rehabilitation. And some of you may be familiar with this bridge. This is one of the last trust bridges we have, or it is, I'm sorry, the last trust bridge we have in the City of Stillwater. It's on Sanger Road, just north of Highway 51, by the Botanic Garden. It's an old trust bridge, 1950. It's a beauty. Let me tell you what, they don't make them like this anymore, but we've got one, and it's still serving the life of the public. There's about 800 vehicles a day that use this road, so it's not the type of bridge that we'd look at from our system and saying, "We need to replace this, upgrade it, widen it." We need to look at what's our best investment of dollars from a rehabilitation standpoint. So, we'll be going through some alternatives on that, but it definitely will include a deck replacement. This bridge has a wooden deck over steel beams. It's, you know, if you like bridges, it's definitely a nice bridge to look at, but these things don't last forever. The last part of the bridge program will basically look at six bridges that we've prioritized based on the inspection reports that are at their point, they're needing some maintenance activity. This bridge is similar to some of the others. This is basically Virginia over Stillwater Creek. Just as you approach Perkins Road, you also see the pedestrian bridge there to the north, and like many bridges, it has joint repair problems, concrete spalls, a lot of different things that we have to put together. This is specialized work that we'll have to contract out for, and there's some other testing that we'll be doing. But I just wanted to share that with you guys, so that you understand what's involved with the bridge, and why we're doing basically a task order-type contract. This is kind of the first phase. The consultant will work on developing some alternatives. Once we've completed with that phase, we'll be able to narrow down our costs for the actual plan development and preparation, and so that'll be an additional task order to them at a future date. But we went through our RFQ process, and our recommendation was for BKL out of Tulsa. Thank you.
The bridge on Miller, Virginia, that's not an old bridge either, is it?
This one was built, I think, in the Bridge Report, 1980. The one at Third Avenue was 1966, and like I said, the trust bridge is a 1950 bridge out there. You know, part of it is just, it's one of those things, bridges are, historically have been low priority for maintenance. They're pretty durable structures, and so they're not routinely maintained. Like we're doing with the pavement management, we're trying to build that asset management for our bridge program, and make sure that we're systematically maintaining these at the right point, at the right cost, so we're not into that structurally deficient category where we're needing to go in and do a full reconstruction or replacement. Yes, sir.
Any questions, Dr. Peak? And so, recommendation is to approve a design contract, and award is...
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion on this recommendation?
I make a motion to approve the design contract for bridges. Is there a number on it, I need to say?
Yes. It's, it's a, basically, your authorization contract to BKL and setting a design expenditure limit of $147,722.58, and that's basically for the design and design contingency.
Second for motion.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion second to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is approved, three to zero. And that takes us down to item C, license agreement between the City of Stillwater and the Oklahoma Department of Public Safety. Mr. McClain, hello.
John McClain, External Services. Back in late June, early July, it came to the Chamber of Commerce' attention that Department of Public Safety was going to have to move out of their current facility, because the rent was gonna exceed what state policies would allow. This was a concern in that this could potentially mean that citizens in Stillwater would have to leave town to get the testing necessary to obtain their driver's license. And so, they contacted the City of Stillwater, and we began working with the Department of Public Safety to try to determine if we had a city facility that could be an alternate location and meet their needs. We have identified a, an unused portion of the old Naval Reserve Center down in Couch Park that would fit the bill for what the Department of Public Safety needs, and we've negotiated an agreement with them to utilize that facility. Just to give you the basics of the agreement, they're gonna operate a driver's license testing facility from 8:00 a.m. to 4:45 p.m., Monday through Friday. They're going to pay the city a license fee of $1,416.66 a month, and a fairly big deal is that they're also gonna provide a commercial driver's license testing, and that's not currently offered in Stillwater, and it's my understanding that a lot of people in Stillwater need commercial driver's licenses and have to go to ENID to get those at the current time. So, that's gonna be provided a minimum of three days a week in Stillwater, and so that's an additional benefit of this agreement that we didn't have before. For the city's part, we're gonna renovate a portion of that park maintenance facility to meet the DPS office needs, and then we're gonna provide a portion of the parking lot at Wittenberg Park to do the CDL testing. Now, the renovation is gonna cost $135,000 roughly. We don't have that budget at the moment, so we're recommending that you take some of the revenue, the unanticipated revenue that we're getting from water sales at Lake McMurtry, and budget that to cover the renovation of the facility. And so, staff would recommend that you approve the budget amendment and approve the agreement subject to, there are a few little issues still to be ironed out legally, subject to final legal review, and then authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
But I really, this has been an interesting process as this has gone through, and when this question first came up about the driver's license facility, and gosh, it could go away, I started asking people, so, name the top 20 things that your city needs to have, and driver's license testing never got to the list, until I asked them, "Well, what if we didn't have a driver's license facility?" Well, my gosh, what kind of town is this if you don't have a driver's license facility? And so, it's one of those, well, it's one of those things you don't think about...
But you need it.
But even with people in the audience that have gone through that recently, of needing to get driver's licenses for them or their kids, they know having that here is a huge benefit, and I love that concept of working with them and them adding the service of commercial driver's license, because we do...
That was part of your conversations you mentioned to me. You had heard somebody mention the CDL, so we saw it as an opportunity to kind of turn this into a quasi-economic development program as well, and we made the request, if they could, and they were excited about the request and included, but not only is it, as Mr. McClain pointed out, people here need to get that CDL, what I'm thinking about is all the people in the surrounding communities who need to go somewhere to get their CDL. They often stay overnight. Come here, get their CDL, eat in the restaurant, stay in the hotel, take a test, that's good. A little more, keeps Marcy's financial reports looking better every time we can add a little bit of visitorship to the community.
That is true. So, adding that commercial driver's license thing is huge, and keeping that in Stillwater, I think, is a huge, important element for our citizens, even if you've never thought about it before. Okay, any other questions for Mr. McClain?
I move we accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion in a sec. And that is approved, three to zero. Takes us down to item D, operations agreement between City of Stillwater and Stillwater Area Sports Association.
So, I just stayed here. Back in July, the Stillwater Air Sports Association made a presentation to the council recommending that they take over the recreation and sports programming that the city currently offers. This would be a public-private partnership, similar to what we have with Lake McMurtry Friends and the Friends of Multi-Aarts. We've negotiated an agreement with SASSA since that time, and I will give you some of the high points in the agreement. SASSA plans to commence operations on September 9th. They will operate and manage all of our youth and adult sports programs that are not currently offered by another association, so this doesn't impact what we're doing with the soccer association at this point. They'll provide for all the routine maintenance and preparation of the sports fields and the facilities that they occupy. They're gonna provide recreation and competitive programs that are open to all ages and abilities, and then they're gonna report annually to the council and seasonally to the staff as to how things are progressing. City of Stillwater is gonna provide a maximum subsidy of $75,000 per quarter, and that is intended to reduce to zero at some point. We're not, we're not timelining out when that will reduce to zero, similar to Lake McMurtry at this point, because we don't know how things are gonna go, and both the city and SASSA need to kind of see how it goes before we say, "Yeah, we're ready to, we're ready to drop this down." We're gonna permanently transfer a variety of maintenance and sports equipment to SASSA as part of this agreement. That transfer, once the value of that equipment has been determined, will come out of that We're gonna work in cooperation with SASSA. They're gonna start operation September 9th. The plan is for them to move into the armory facility and work cooperatively with staff through January 1 to kind of help with the transition, so that's, that's when things will transition over completely to SASSA, assuming that the agreement is approved. And we already have the funding to fund this agreement. If SASSA takes over operations, it's gonna allow us to reduce a lot of what we're currently doing, and the funds that we would've spent doing that will go to fund this agreement. So, we're already covered in the fiscal year budget this year. And staff recommends that council approve the operations agreement and that we get another public-private partnership going.
They will operate and manage all of our youth and adult sports programs that are not currently offered by another association, so this doesn't impact what we're doing with the Soccer Association at this point. They'll provide for all the routine maintenance and preparation of the sports fields and the facilities that they occupy. They're going to provide recreation and competitive programs that are open to all ages and abilities, and then they're going to report annually to the council and seasonally to the staff as to how things are progressing. City of Stillwater is going to provide a maximum subsidy of seventy-five thousand dollars per quarter, and that is intended to reduce to zero at some point. We're not, we're not timelining out when that will reduce to zero, similar to Lake McMurtry at this point, because we don't know how things are going to go, and both the city and S A S A need to kind of see how it goes before we say, "Yeah, we're ready to, we're ready to drop this down." We're going to permanently transfer a variety of maintenance and sports equipment to S A S A as part of this agreement. That transfer, once the value of that equipment has been determined, will come out of that seventy-five thousand dollars. We're going to work in cooperation with S A S A. They're going to start operation September ninth. The plan is for them to move into the armory facility and work cooperatively with staff through January one to kind of help with the transition, so that's, that's when things will transition over completely to S A S A, assuming that the agreement is approved. And we already have the funding to fund this agreement. If S A S A takes over operations, it's going to allow us to reduce a lot of what we're currently doing, and the funds that we would have spent doing that will go to fund this agreement, so we're already covered in the fiscal year budget this year. And staff recommends that council approve the operations agreement and that we get another public-private partnership going. Kevin Fowler is here with S A S A, if you have any questions for him or me.
Questions for Mr. McClain? I've got a couple. The first is on the money side. Seventy-five a quarter, is that less than what we have been spending to provide these program?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be, there'll be a cost savings to the city initially, and eventually it'll get better.
It's not significant, it's not a significant cost savings yet, but as this progresses, it will get a lot better.
That's the same theory we went into with McMurtry and Multi-Arts was, it's not, the whole benefit's not right now, but we're starting the process to get to the full benefit. And then my second question, and when the presentation was made in July, I made the statement that this agreement must result in recreational programming being a part of it, no questions asked. Do you feel comfortable that this agreement has, that there will be recreational sports programming available to the kids of Stillwater under this?
Yes, it's been, it's been a consideration in the discussions with S A S A. The city attorney made sure that the language was written in a way that we would make sure that there were recreational sports programs, the same as we offer now, and it's a philosophical importance to the S A S A group also, so I think with, with all of that in place, everything is going to proceed as you anticipate.
And as you understand it, this is a local group, S A S A is a local group.
Yes.
And it's a local nonprofit group.
Right.
And it is all sports, adult and youth.
Yes.
I move that we accept the S A S A partnership.
Second.
Motion in a second. And that is adopted three to nothing.
We have high hopes for S A S A.
We have high hopes for S A S A.
I think, and it's nice that the Friends of Lake McMurtry have kind of set the bar, because since the Friends of Lake McMurtry agreement's taken place, they have, they've really elevated the opportunities and developments at the lake, and it's really becoming more and more popular, and I think they have the opportunity to do that with our recreation and youth competitive sports, both, and adult sports.
All right, that takes us down to, oh, it takes us down to item E, letter of intent between Oklahoma Commissioners of Land Office and City of Stillwater Exchange Properties, Jardo Airport, Perkins and Airport.
Mayor and council members, Dan Blankenship, S U A Director. This is simply an interim step in the process of the land exchange for our power generation station. In working with the State Commissioners of Land Office, this is a standard procedure to enter into a letter of intent. It does not obligate us in any way, shape, or form. It just generally lays out kind of the general terms of the agreement, and it expressly states that if we're unable to come to a full agreement, that we have no obligations under this. And so, I'm not asking you to approve the land swap tonight, just to, to take the step to authorize the mayor to sign the notice of, or letter of intent, so that we can continue on in the, in the state process, and then we'll be back in, I think, probably about forty-five days with a, hopefully, a final agreement to actually make the land swap. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, we recommend that you authorize the mayor to sign this letter of intent.
I'm fine with it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second on this letter of intent.
Thank you very much.
Approved three to nothing. Thank you. And that takes us down to ordinances, and we have three ordinances. First two are on first reading. Ordinance three-two-three-eight, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance closing utility easements at a property addressed at seven-one-one West Peaceable Acres Road.
Any questions on this ordinance? Motion?
I move we accept.
Second.
Had to look at it here, thirty-two, thirty-eight.
Motion in a second to accept ordinance three-two-three-eight. That is approved three to nothing. That takes us down to ordinance three-two-three-nine. Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance resounding attractive land located at forty-five-ninety-nine North Washington Street from C B P U D, Commercial Planned Unit Development, to R T M P U D, Two-Family and Multifamily Planned Unit Development.
Any questions on this one? Motion?
Make the motion to accept the ordinance three-two-three-nine.
I was going to do it by voting.
That's one way. That passes three to zero, and then on second reading, ordinance three-two-three-seven.
An ordinance amending the Stillwater Municipal Code by repealing Chapter thirty-nine Taxation, Article Three, Sales and Use Tax, Division Six, Transportation Sales Tax, Sections thirty-nine-two-thirty-eight to thirty-nine-two-forty-six, to create the two thousand thirteen Transportation Sales Tax Ordinance, leaving a sales tax of one percent, providing an effective date, designating projects on which revenues can be expended, providing for definitions, exemptions, and administrative procedures, and providing for payment of obligations incurred under ordinance number twenty-nine-twenty-three, two thousand six Transportation Sales Tax.
Okay. Any questions on?
I don't quite understand that one, so somebody enlighten me a little more. I've read it. That's a one percent sales tax for transportation?
That's the R Stillwater sales tax for transportation.
That's what people will be voting on in November. There's no place to say that we're voting on it.
It was done in the resolution that you authorized at the meeting on?
I just want to make it clear. The ordinance is approved, and it doesn't become effective unless the voters approve it on the ballot on November the twelfth.
That's the explanation I wanted.
Is there a motion on this?
I move to accept ordinance number three-two-three-seven.
Second.
Motion in a second on three-two-three-seven, on second reading. That passes three to nothing. That takes us down to reports from officers. Mr. Dorman.
One item tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S subsection three oh seven B four for the purpose of confidential communication regarding a pending workers' compensation claim filed by Stephen H. Hall. It is my opinion that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process this claim and/or conduct an investigation and/or to prosecute or defend in resulting litigation or proceeding in the public interest.
Anything else?
That's all I have tonight, sir.
Mr. Galloway.
Nothing further reports, Seavy.
Okay. You guys got anything?
I don't know.
Only thing I have is I'm looking on the calendar for our radio show with Bill Van S. next Tuesday. I've got you on the schedule for next Tuesday, is that?
You're fine.
Okay, next Tuesday, eight fifteen on K S P I seven-eighty. Vice Mayor will be on there with Bill Van S. Okay, anything for upcoming meetings? Okay, questions or inquiries? Okay, tell you what, we're going to recess this meeting, and we're going to call to order Stillwater Utility Authority for September fifth, and if I can get this to work. So, September fifteenth, Utility Authority, we have two items on the consent docket. Does anybody wish to remove either item from the consent docket?
Will we accept a consent docket?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve consent docket. And the consent docket is approved three to nothing. That takes us down to resolutions, two thousand and thirteen-four. Their report?
Chris Knight, Waste Management Manager. The resolution, two thousand thirteen dash four. Okay, is, we are, we were, we have been approached by the customers in our outside city limits to be able to offer a different trash cart size in those areas. They currently only offer the ninety-six gallon trash cart size, so they would, we had a lot of people, our customers, would like to be able to get a smaller trash cart size, since we now offer recycling. So, we are recommending that we, I'm recommending that you approve this new price structure for the waste management residential trash service.
So, this is just allowing out-of-town, our customers out of city limits to obtain the two smaller trash can sizes?
Yes, and they get a incentive of a price break, just like the customers inside city limits.
Okay, so the math can be the same, where if you recycle, you can now save money?
Yes.
They still pay a higher rate than in the city.
Yeah.
But proportionally, it's less than their nights.
This does nothing to inside-city rate, inside-city limit rates?
No.
So, I make sure.
No, I don't have any questions on that, and I would ask another question when you're finished.
Okay. Motion?
I move to accept, how do I say that?
Resolution number S U A twenty thirteen dash four.
Twenty, I move to accept resolution dash twenty thirteen dash four.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second on this resolution.
Then a question.
Question.
When, when are we going to complete passing out carts for all the recycling? Oh, I did. The recycling for the complete City of Stillwater, when are we going to complete that?
We are, it's completed.
No, it's not.
I mean, for all the requests that we had on record, we have delivered all those.
You missed the city council. I turned one in for ten-eleven South Jardo.
Well, we can have that to, we can have that to you tomorrow.
Okay. It's supposed to have been there the thirteenth of August, I was told, so.
But as far as everything that we, we had, that we did deliver, but ten-eleven South Jardo.
I've got a grandson about driving me nuts, and I did turn it in.
Which size did you request?
The small.
Smallest one?
Yeah.
All right, we'll have it there for you.
Wait a minute.
We have thirty-five, the middle size is a sixty-four, and then the ninety-six.
Thirty-five, let me.
Yes, sir.
We can repeat to say that anybody else watching, if they don't, haven't got those yet.
Yeah, I mean, if you haven't, all you gotta do.
We think we've got them all.
Contact customer service, and we'll get it to you.
And I did that, by the way.
I mean, because we are still delivering carts from requests that have came in, but initially, we completed everything, but we will continue to deliver as they come in.
Appreciate it, thank you. And you're doing a good job.
And I appreciate that service. I like being able to recycle. Thank you.
It's good stuff, good stuff. All right, is there a motion to adjourn, S U A?
So note.
Second.
And that passes through nothing. You're adjourned on S U A, and that takes us back to city council. We'll reconvene city council, and is there a motion to move into executive session?
I move to, move into executive session.
Second.
And that passes three to nothing. We are in executive session.